It didn't work. After the meeting, if we still six or if you guys are still in the office, then I'll go ahead and go through what I learned about setting up for the meeting with a minute track. I wonder if I should, should I restart the computer maybe?
Hey, Justin, what's up?
Oh no, it's better now.
Okay. Hey. Oh geez. Melody?
Yeah.
Did you already exit out and come in once? I have Justin on the phone.
Yeah, I did. I I Xed out and then logged in again. You sound, it comes in and out like right now you sounded okay, but then you at the beginning you were broken up.
Okay. Yeah. Exactly. Okay. Well, we'll just leave that because we can hear her fine. So she sounds good. Okay.
Melody, who is your applicant for?
Well, the most important part, Justin, do we look good?
Juan Aguayo?
All right, Justin, thanks. Justin says, I look good, you guys.
Just to make sure, are we only going to let one of the attendees in at a time?
What we should try to do is let Tarek in first as the applicant. Then we'll open the public meeting. And maybe we'll ask the folks, anybody who would like to participate in this item, please click your hand icon, your whatever the icon that appears at the bottom.
Okay.
On the one that I did yesterday, yeah, it 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 a little, a little hand appeared at at the bottom. But I don't, but maybe because the meeting hasn't started, but yeah, a little, there's a way for them to signal us that they want to participate. So maybe that's what we do.
Okay.
And then if they want to participate, you can let them in.
Should I restart it or should I, because I'm still getting the?
She, he says unfortunately, if you try, the next step is to restart your whole computer. But if you restart the whole computer, it may have updates, so you may not be able to get back on for a bit.
Oh, I see. So what do I do if I can't hear like questions or?
Well, we'll just explain it as technical difficulties. Your, your, your hearing aid isn't working today.
Okay.
Hey, Stefan, how are you?
Okay, thanks.
No, uh, yeah, Mel, you mean, yeah, he just, he's worried about. Start first, Tarek asking a question. He guess? Let me ask. There, everybody's sending messages that, that they can see and hear us. So maybe. So if there's attendees on. What we'll do is you'll be able to hear us throughout the meeting and when the public hearing is open. Then we'll let you into the meeting and the committee members will be able to see and hear you at that point.
So as we start present, presenting the item, did you want to do it then? Or did you want, so that way they can see the presentation?
They can see and hear us now.
Okay. So so let them in after when we let, we finish our presentation?
Let me. Yes, correct.
Am I the only committee member?
Yes, you are.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm on the right Zoom.
For those attendees, we will not commence the meeting yet. We are still waiting for two other committee members to join in. So just sit tight and. You're in the right Zoom links, just, we're waiting.
Can you send them a message through the Q and A? As the host?
Um, did we want to not use those because they're not part of the?
No, well, I was just curious if, if we had to send somebody something right now to let them all know in case they. Can't hear us. I have you on the other side. I need to go to this side.
Are we missing people?
Yes, we are waiting. John just logged in and we are waiting for Dean to log in as well.
And just so everyone knows, we are on, the, the attendees can hear and see us. So, so, so we should all probably be on mute until the meeting starts.
For Stone too?
Hi, John, are you staying safe?
Uh, trying to. Yeah, I'm in a room by myself, so I get to, I get to run free and loose for a little bit.
Okay, that's good.
I would, I would have shouted out to you hello earlier, but Robert told me to stop and be quiet, so.
Yeah, we're, we can break the rules a little bit.
I'll, I'll be glad when all of this nonsense is over with.
Yeah, it's starting to make a lot of people start to do right now, including myself.
Yeah, I was, uh. The mind said that I'm gonna have to, and now it's looking like routine through summer. So yeah, it gets old. But you gotta stay safe and you gotta watch out for others.
No, it is. And then before the scene starts, John, your internet connection is a little spotty and so we want to make sure that you're going to be heard during this meeting.
Okay.
So for all our attendees, I just wanted to let you know that we haven't started the meeting yet. We are waiting for a quorum. Therefore, we are waiting for one more committee member to. Connect into the Zoom meeting. As soon as he connects, we'll go ahead and commence the meeting, but sit tight. We are running a little behind.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Melody, I'm noticing that there's a couple extra folders for this first item. So am I to assume that these other folders in here are old documents and the ones I pay attention to are the ones November forward?
Give me one second and let me look at the folders real quick.
Yeah. We've got two folders that say revised, et cetera. But the dates are back 2018, 2019. I just want to be looking at the right documents.
Committee member Burchard, so the other folders inside of that link are for previous. Projects that are associated with that site, but the ones that you should be looking at are the new ones that are not in that folder or not in the folders. The CUP search for 20, so look at those. Melody will present those items to you and then she'll touch on the past history onsite.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, for everybody who is in attendance, again, thank you for holding on. Our last committee member is having some issues, so he is going to be going to the city hall to. Uh, get onto the Zoom webinar. So if you're going to give us about 20 minutes, just to make sure that he's set up and ready to go. Again, we are running behind, but we will be starting. So again, thank you for your patience.
If it's gonna be 20 minutes, I'm going to lock up for a bit and I'll come back in at five o'clock. That's 15 minutes.
Um, okay.
Just saying, all right, Dean, you're gonna sit right here and you should, you should be good.
Okay.
I don't have this sheet, but I guess I will.
Yeah, they'll follow.
And you're going to be, um, you're unmuted, so the only way to mute yourself is if you come up over here and hit the mouse and you go. Yeah, yeah, so just be aware.
Dean, if you, if you, you just let me know and I can mute you from my end.
I won't say anything until I have.
Yeah, Brenda, you could rename them also, so it doesn't say Robert Rodriguez as well if you want to.
All right. All right, I'll leave you on your D.
Commissioner, if you want me to mute you at any time, just put up your hand and then I will, I'll do so.
Okay.
Commissioner Rivera did step away and he's not going to log in until five.
Okay.
Should we call him to find out if he can log back on? Because I think he was assuming that. That Mr. Kiefer wouldn't be able to join us until 5:05 PM.
Yes, well, go ahead and give him a call right now. Is the audio sounding better now, Melody?
Yeah, I can hear you a lot better.
Perfect. Perfect.
Okay.
Terrific. You can start the meeting whenever you're ready, John.
Okay, we'll do. Okay. I'm gonna call to order the ARC Architectural Review Committee meeting for January 14th, 2021 at 4:55 PM. Roll call.
Committee Member Burchard.
President.
Committee Member Kiefer.
Present.
Committee Member Rivera.
Present.
And let the record show that Committee Member Durbin didn't notify us that he would not be able to attend today.
Uh, okay, very good. Confirmation of the agenda.
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, public comments. During this part of the, of the meeting, the public is invited to address the Architecture Review Committee on any matter not on the agenda. If you wish to speak item, please wait to be recognized, as the Brown Act prohibits the Architecture Review Committee or staff from responding or taking action on any comments made by the public unless it pertains to an item that appears on the agenda. All speakers should give their name and city of residence and limit their remarks to three minutes. Okay, is there anyone participating in this meeting who would like to speak at this time?
If you can just, if you are going to speak, if you could place a hand so I can move you into queue. If not, I do not see anybody, Committee Member Rivera, so.
Okay. Okay, in that case, we will close public comments and move on. We're taking this in order, Dick? I can go, okay, so I'm gonna share, I've been number one, additional use permit number two zero dash zero zero two, review the proposed site plan, architecture and landscape for an existing 3,700 square, 60 square foot cannabis business manufacturing and distribution site.
Hello, good afternoon. My name's Melody and I'll be presenting this project. Can, can you see these, the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, um, so this project is for an existing cannabis business. As mentioned, it is for manufacturing and distribution. It's located north of Perez Road along Summit Drive. So before I get into the details of the site and the project, I just wanted to provide some background. Um, the cannabis, or this site was actually originally approved back in 2016. Um, and at the time, it was just for one operator. Now, um, it has evolved into two operations, which now requires each operation to have its own individual CUP and as well as a local license. Um, as a result, BPX had, did apply for a CUP on January 15th. Um, and is currently going through a renewal process for their local license. So the property is located within the parcel outline in red, and BPX will be located in that building. Outlining yellow is the total area that, um, so two buildings and they share the same parking area as well as access. However, they're under two separate parcels. Here we just have a street view of, of the property. Um, the red, the red arrow indicates where BPX will be located. Um, I'll also take an opportunity to provide a little bit more of history. Um, as I mentioned, this property was originally reviewed back in 2016. Um, since then, projects, reviews of these type of projects have evolved and more requirements, more development standards are looked at, but at the time, they did improve the parking areas we, we see here. Um, as well as develop a trash enclosure, or they constructed a trash enclosure to city standard. Um, in addition, um, the project was also reviewed by the ARC in April 17th of 2019. Um, this was for the elevations, um, that are shown here. At the time, they had requested to add metal panels and a gray color scheme to the building. Um, however, as I'll discuss further in the presentation, um, they did decide to go in a different direction for the CUP. So again, um, this is a new opportunity to review the project. Um, as I mentioned, um, there were some things that weren't addressed in the initial CUP review. As I mentioned, it has evolved, so the applicant is proposing to improve the shared parking area between both buildings. As well as the areas that are indicated in green that are along the Summit Drive frontage. So here's just a closer look at that parking area between the buildings. Um, as I'm, at this time, they don't have any delineated parking stalls. Um, so they'll be striping the parking lot, um, as well as adding some wheel stops. Uh, it is, there is some limited space, but the applicant has accommodated additional parking areas by adding three motorcycle spaces. And then they also have two loading areas that they'll be using as parking stalls when they're not in use. And then they're also meeting the 50% shading requirement by adding shading structures in the areas that are highlighted in blue. So this is the frontage along Summit Drive. They'll be improving the landscape areas and I'll discuss that further in the presentation. Um, but there'll also be adding four parking stalls at the front as well. And then the remaining improvements are already existing. So here's the floor plan. As I mentioned, there are now two separate operations, um, which will now be in two separate suites. The area outlined in red is where BPX will be located. And then here's a closer look at the, at the floor plan. They're proposing, um, a total of 3,064 square feet of manufacturing, 134 square feet of distribution, and then 562 square feet of ancillary space. So again, um, the applicant decided to go in a different direction than the elevations that we discussed earlier. Um, they're adding this wood cladding to cover up the fire equipment. And then they'll be adding a corrugated metal screening and then repainting the building as well. So moving southeast, um, they'll be also adding metal cladding to cover up the conduits that are currently exposed. And then they'll also be repainting the building as well on this area. As well as at the rear, um, this is the area that faces the alley. They'll be painting the building here and then also painting the conduits to match. Um, this area isn't visible from the public, public view. So this is what the landscaping currently looks like. Currently missing some landscaping in areas and then some landscaping is in disrepair. However, the applicant is proposing to refresh it and update it as well. They'll be adding a few trees, um, as well as adding a ground cover as well. Some of the shrubs that they're proposing are some agaves as well as barrel cactus. And then they'll be using the decomposed granite as well as the ground cover in the color Apache brown. Uh, with this, I conclude my presentation. Um, I believe the applicant is also available for questions.
Uh, committee members, any questions from staff?
What's the color on the outside of the building gonna be now? Can you go back to that?
It'll be, um, like a beige color, so they're basically refreshing that paint where it exists.
And the original plan with the beautiful design, the blues and the grays and stuff, that was all the way in the back or where was?
No, um.
Because that was a great design.
So this, this, um, they came back in 2019, um, and this is approved at that time. But in the CUP, they did decide, um, to go in a different direction, but if you have recommendations regarding their elevations, we can certainly incorporate these as well.
Okay, so now it's wood on the side and metal at the top, so it's a simpler design.
Correct. Now they're proposing the, um, the wood cladding, um, around this area and then, um, the corrugated metal.
Right.
Corrugated metal screening.
But it, that shows like those are glass doors instead of the metal doors.
Correct. They're, they're also, I apologize. They, they're also replacing the doors as well and then the, the glass of the windows, so that'll be new as well.
So it'll look less industrial, okay.
Committee members, if you do have any questions for the applicant, um, he has been unmuted, uh, which will allow him to speak freely if you have any questions towards the project brand.
Uh, is there a more specific, um, information on the wood cladding, what, what that material is? I'm concerned with how it will hold up with our, with our, with our summer heat and, and sunlight.
Um, in their elevation, they, they only said wood cladding, um, but I'll let the applicant, um, explain further.
Okay.
Um, could we unmute the architects, please? It, it would need to chime in on this. So it would be Tony and Daisy.
Uh, Chair Rivera, let's wait to open the public hearing, the public portion of it, and if every, if every, if all the committee members finished their comments.
Okay, are all the committee members finished with any comments or questions, so we can open public comments for the applicant?
This is Committee Member Burchard. It's just a little plain, that's all. The design before, I wasn't part of that process, but that was pretty cool. I do like the metal across the top. I'd like to see a little bit more about the wood also. And the color, the, the drawing doesn't do it justice, unfortunately.
Does anyone else have any comments from the, from the committee? Okay, well, let's go ahead and, and, um, open comments to the applicant.
Uh, okay, committee members, can, can you hear me? Uh, my name is Tony DeBaggi. I'm with TV Architects and I'm the architect.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. So to answer the question about the wood cladding, we, we, we are proposing actually to use a materi- material called Trespa, which is a fiber material, looks like wood, but it will hold up much better than wood, uh, in the, especially in the weather that you have in Cathedral City. So it will look like wood, but it will not be wood. It will be Trespa, which is a fiber material. And it is meant for exterior use.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that because, uh, we have, you know, the, the, people will use a, a, um, material similar to that for outdoor decking and it just, it just does, it's, it doesn't hold up well. It doesn't last very long.
And that, that is different, actually. Trespa is a very nice material. If, uh, we can provide a sample for you guys to look at it. It's used in, in, on buildings quite a bit, and it's a very nice material that holds up really nicely. It is different, it is different than what you were thinking that, that, what people use for their decking. It's a different material.
Well, I would offer this just as a suggestion, but since you have, um, the metal already on the, on the project, uh, for the, to screen the roof mounted equipment, you, I think you would be well served to use the, the more of that material in this place with the, using an accent color. It would last a lot longer, it would, it would, it would hold up a lot better.
We, we can definitely look into it. Another option we can do is we can use aluminum panels that look like wood. So we can still have the same look, but it won't be wood, it will be aluminum panels. That is an option that we are willing to look into.
That would be a smarter option, in my opinion.
Yeah, not, not a problem.
If you could add some other accents with that brown too. I don't know, I just, I like visually appealing, uh, buildings and homes. So I, I don't know what you could do to add this brown in other areas so that it pops a little bit more.
Yeah, one, one option, uh, committee member, one option that we can do is we can use the same, uh, aluminum, uh, wood looking aluminum on the screen as well, the roof screen. So you'll have the canopy and the screen be the same color, the brown, and the rest of the building will be the beige color.
That would look really nice. Is there a way to do like the window trimming and door trimming in similar color?
Yeah, we can, for the window frames, we can use a darker tone aluminum than, uh, than silver. So we can use.
Is this, is this, is this?
I, I didn't hear the last thing that was mentioned.
Is the, is, okay, I'm sorry. Is the front of the building the only place where this brown is used? On the, on the side?
Yeah, the front is the only side where we're using the brown, the brown color. Now, if we do.
On this building? Did, it, um, here, here's my thought on this. I don't wanna pick a color, but the, the brown is really not helping this building much. There's not a whole lot going on for this, this building to begin with. And I, I just feel like the brown is not, uh, it, it, it's not a successful color for this building.
Is it only on the building on the right, so the left is gonna remain, even though they, they're similar, correct?
No, the, the both sides, um, both left and right, um, that is a, a different, um, operator. Um, they've agreed to mimic the building on, on the other side as well, so it's one cohesive design. So
Okay.
while they, they are separate owners, everyone's come into agreement to, um, everyone's signed off on this and they're gonna, they're gonna, uh, work together on this project.
Okay, can we see the wide shot again, because some, you could perhaps take it across where the parking, where the, where that wall is right there, that solid wall before it hits the gate? Is there a way to tie in that stripe somehow on that blank wall? Just so it's more fluid all the way across.
Good point. I like that.
Hey, hey, Melody, can you please go back to the street shot that you had earlier?
The, this, this.
No, both, both, can, can we see a full shot of both buildings with the parking? Do you have that one? You, there, exactly. So if, if the top, where they were gonna do the brown, comes across, can we do some kind of stripe between where the gates are and that wall to where it ties into each building? It could be nice where it comes down as the L and then it continues as the stripe across, stops at the metal gate and continues. So then it flows all the way and looks long and linear.
Yeah, that, that's an option. That's an option that we can look into.
Because how wide was that band coming down on your L? Is that two feet or what?
It's about two, uh, about, let, let me check really quick. Uh, it's about three feet, three and a half feet.
Oh, it is that wide?
Yeah.
So maybe a one and a half, do half of it, could work, like, do the two thirds up and run it across, so.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that option.
I don't know, thoughts, John?
I agree with Dean, and my idea with the windows and the doors is to just take that color again, whatever material you use is whatever material you use, but to duplicate the color and add some trim elements to it, I think will help the brown and also maybe a lighter shade of brown, I don't know, something that, uh, The brown and also maybe a lighter shade of brown, I don't know, something that uh is to.
We couldn't hear, Committee Member Rivera, we couldn't hear what you mentioned.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Really lose John?
Um unfortunately, we can't.
It's just really hard to see that the that image of the size. I feel like I'm looking at a postage stamp. Oh, I'm just saying, it's really hard to make it make it a good choice here, because the image that I'm getting, it's about. Size of a postage stamp. It's a little bit bigger. Um the 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 one that you're showing, you're the 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 PowerPoint slide.
Committee Member Rivera, you are breaking up and um unfortunately, we couldn't make out the last few things that you said. Could you repeat that?
Um that I was just saying, it's it's hard to make a good choice based on on these these li- limited views that we have of the building. But. Honestly, I think I feel like I can see enough of the building in the in the plan presentation that is just. It they're just not doing very much with it. There's there's not a whole lot put into this. It's 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 very minimal as far as the improvements.
Would the committee members feel uh? M- more comfortable if the applicant were to provide additional options? And bring it back before the committee?
Yes.
I I agree, I think they should.
Yep. To to be frank, this is this is a nonstarter. This this is this is just, there's so little has has been done to improve the building. Um and. Many of the other projects that have come into this same neighborhood have looked just looked so much better than this.
Okay, um. So then, should I summarize the comments that you provided so the applicant has them? Okay, so so some of the comments that I got um. Was adding more accents and using more of the brown color. Um in around the door trimmings, um also carrying the stripe al- along the. Block wall all the way to the next building. Um. And then. An alternative material also to to the wood, um doing the aluminum panels instead.
Uh that's correct, and I and I thought I did hear your staffs also say um s- some other options as well.
Um could you repeat the other options, just so I make sure I have them?
Well, uh.
I think I I think I think that was at the discretion of the of the applicant to come up with other options.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I think I'd like to, you know, make to clarify for the applicant that these are ideas. They're more than welcome to present others. But the point is that we do need to see a different design or designs for this building.
Understood.
All right. Also, I think at this point, we then entertain a motion to continue the project.
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Roll call.
Uh Committee Member Burchard?
Hi.
Committee Member Keeper?
Yes.
Committee Member Rivera?
Yes.
The motion passes for uh three to zero. To continue.
Thank you.
And if you. Give me just one second, I've got to uh just make sure that we um. Remove some of the uh attendees so that they can't speak. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, are we ready for for item number two?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two, conditional use permit number two zero dash zero two zero. Review the proposed site plan, architecture and landscape to establish a four thousand six hundred and ninety seven square foot cannabis business. Okay. All I'd like to add, I I believe this is not a conflict of interest. But I'll allow staff to advise otherwise. Um the applicant, Mr. Edlin Kim, had contributed to my council race in two thousand eighteen. But I believe we're well past the requirement. I think we're okay, but if Robert, if you could please verify that for me.
Uh you are correct, Chair Rivera. Also. Uh we are having you cut in and out. You may want to turn off your video. So that we can hear you.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
And I'll go ahead and share my screen. Means that. Presentation.
Hey, uh Dean, if you could hear me, the light switch is on the right side. There you go.
All right. So uh committee members and attendees, my name is Brenda Ramirez and I'll be presenting the item before you. Conditional use permit number twenty dash zero two one is located at. Six eight six two five Perez Road. The uh business will be uh occupying units six and seven. Here's a look at the site plan. The outline of the in red is comprised of unit six and seven for you. The applicant is proposing to combine both suites and operate a four thousand six hundred ninety seven square foot cannabis business. Uh made up of cultivation area. Uh the site is located within the light industrial zoning district, so the use is permitted uh is permitted. With the conditional use application. Here's a street view of the project sites. Um suites. Seven and six are in the rear and are not abutting the street. Uh this site has been before the Architecture Review Committee uh a couple of times. Uh most recently, uh this site was before the Architecture Review Committee uh for Suite Eight, I believe. Um the project overall has. In the past, received a couple of comments, but we are bringing it before the Architecture Review Committee. Because uh those comments that we did apply to the overall site um are are a little old. And so we just wanted to make sure that everybody is still comfortable uh with the site as it is uh today. And what they're working to continue to make the site. So here is a closer look at units uh uh suite seven and six from um street view. This was Suite Eight, which came before the Architecture Review Committee a couple of months ago. And the applicant has done uh several improvements to the site based on the comments that were initially given. Uh for the previous UPs, uh those comments were to um. Upgrade the trash enclosures, which they have improved and upgraded those trash enclosures to city standards. They also have repaved and striped the parking lot closest to. Uh Perez Road, uh my cursor is currently on that. Uh and they are um still pending to do the sidewalk along Perez Road and the landscape, which I will show you in a subsequent slide. Here's the floor plan of the suites. Uh the suites uh other than being combined will not really change uh much. The access point to the suites will still remain in the front and the street of. The street uh sorry, the storefront uh glass uh will remain, they will be placing a wall behind that. Um they will not be removing that storefront view. Here's the elevations of the um site, as I noted before. Um the elevations reflect the comments that were previously approved by the ARC. Um couple uh years ago, and we just wanted to make sure that uh as time has passed, that the ARC is still comfortable with. The uh overall. Recommendations that they had given us for that site. Here is the landscape plan. Uh currently, as you noted, I saw in the street view. The site still does have a lush grass in the front. That is going to be uh converted to a desert scape and along with that, they will be adding a uh sidewalk along Perez Road. Uh this finishes my um presentation. If uh you'd like to make any, have any questions or recommendations. Please uh let me know.
What's the landscape right in front that has dirt? Cause there's right now, it's just dirt. In front of the, there's one section that goes to the red curb. Is that in front of, okay, so it's on the left of it, isn't it? It's not part of theirs. It's left and right.
Correct, but I believe, and uh Robert, if you can help me with that, when the. When the Architecture Review Committee looked at the overall site, they approved an overall landscape plan, which, sorry. Going the wrong way. Which is shown here. So they haven't um, they haven't completed that part of um the improvements on site.
Number.
It is conditioned for this condition uh this UP to uh to do some, to do the work.
Okay, and they're putting the wall behind the glass, and what is that gonna be, a white wall or a black wall? What are they doing? And could it have arcs? Work like the other ones we've had do at Cathedral down here Perez Road on the corner?
Currently, the site overall does not have a design in the windows, however, if it's the committee members' recommendation. We can certainly um provide that. The uh attend uh the applicant is he attending. Uh so as soon as we get to open up that um. Public comments, go ahead and ask them that question.
But what is proposed right now, just a white wall or a black wall, what?
So currently, they'll just be tinting it. Uh let me go back to the picture. So currently, they just have a tent on the windows and they'll continue with that tent.
Cause some of the other ones are clear, you can see it where they're doing work. So this would be different, right?
Yes. I apologize. Yes, uh they they are clear, those were offices prior, but I am, I believe that the um. They will be tinted, uh but again, we can confirm with the applicant once we enter the public comment section.
Okay.
Uh committee members, any other questions or comments? Okay, I I believe then we can go ahead and open public comments for the uh so that the applicant can speak.
Robert, if you can um unmute Kendra?
Uh is it myself or Melody who has the control?
Uh it is you.
Um I don't, I don't have it. I don't have, yeah, I don't have control.
I'm not able to do it either.
Okay, let me go ahead and maybe it just didn't want to.
You're in control and you unmute a bag of like twenty seconds before they get unmuted.
Let me just pass over the control because and it's just easier, unfortunately, with one screen, it's not as. Oh wow, okay. Give me one second, I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing for just a minute. It's not letting me unmute them.
Can you make them make them panelists temporarily?
Not giving me that option, allowing me at the corner there to um to do that. Give me one second. There we go. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties, I can't seem to un.
Yes, Justin.
It's not providing, allowing me to. To allow them to speak. I can't even change the host at this point.
Uh IT is gonna look at it, give them give them a minute.
There's actually an answer.
I can't, sorry, I can't unmute them. Uh applicant did uh state into the chat and answer the questions and answer. And she did state that the windows are currently tinted and will remain tinted unless the committee would like to see any changes. Uh similar to the design at Coastal Harvest at the Vista Paint Center, which have that design. But if not, uh their intentions are to keep it just tinted.
I I have a a quick question. I'm looking at the exterior elevations and there's the uh the. Uh elevation one north and the elevation two north. And. Uh I believe the suite is in the elevation two north, is that correct? And my question is gonna be, is is their storefront, is it behind the arches? Or the or is it behind the uh? The the blue metal roofing?
It's behind the arches, the blue metal roofing is Suite Eight.
Brenda?
Yes.
Please uh go ahead and try to unmute them again?
I just made you the host. I think that just went through.
Oh, it did. All right, so let me push, let me put put them in. All right. Hi Kendra, can you hear us?
Good evening, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
It works.
Great, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Robert, you should always have.
Robert, you should always have the controls, it's Edwin. I don't know why you're acting like you don't have the controls.
Alright, did, did you hear that last question from?
If I could take, if I could take my question just a bit further, my, my comment was gonna be that if your, if, if. If the suite that is being improved is behind the arches, those arches are pretty low. And it, you know, during most of the day, because this is a north facing building, there, there's a lot of shadow in there, and, or a lot of shade. And I, I don't think there would be a lot of value in adding murals to the, to the glazing. I think just keeping the tent would be sufficient. That was, uh, my comment.
Based off of the last meeting, this topic was brought up. And they found it similar, the, I believe the, the last meeting, because of the fact that it's shaded all the time. It is, even if the glass is clear, it does look dark, you can't see it from the street view. Um, and, but we are willing, we've gone through the process with Coastal Harvest Two and submitting a couple of designs. And we're willing to do that, our, our intent, we will be purchasing the building. And our intent is to convert the, the entire location. Uh, where there are no, um, businesses currently to cultivation. So Riverside County is moving out, they already moved out of one and two, they are moving out of the front. Um, and we are waiting to hear if they're gonna be moving out of their offices. Covid has pushed work from home. Um, and, you know, cities are, from what I understand, they're, they're downsizing office space. And that's what the, uh, current landlord has told us, the current owner of the building.
Committee members, do you have any other recommendations? That you would like to discuss with the applicant?
So I'm just curious, the one point that's lighter in the cement, was that a planter at one time where the two arches meet? Cause it looks like it was filled in, right where your arrow is, yeah.
Um, I, I'm, I'm not, I believe it was a planter at one point. Sir, our, our, our whole thing was to, we always leave landscape last. Um, first we would paint the building, we would do any construction that's necessary, and then we would finish it off. Uh, with landscape. Um, it is, we are currently, because of any electrical upgrades. Um, there is a, a very large transformer. Uh, right on, right in the middle of the way, as well as a mailbox, so we have to do some skirting around. And our look, our civil engineer is right now waiting for that, so, um, it's another thing that we're just. Trying to get, you know, through the process and, uh, things are a little bit slow, so we apologize if we don't.
You are buying the building, so is that when we hit you up and make it more desirable, because overall, it's really boring?
Um, I don't, I, I would make the changes, um. Uh, because we are converting most of it, it, it is going to be subject to. Um, my, my biggest thing was, you know, um. I, I guess we, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of okay with the fact that we haven't made. Outside of the paving and the garbage, the waste, uh, trash enclosures. Uh, I'm, I'm kind of nervous if I have to go through another A R C six months from now. And, and someone, and you guys wanted something different after we've already done it, so. I'm, I'm wondering if, cause we have other C U P applications going through the, uh, the mist, uh, the process right now. And if this is, uh, if the changes are set as part of the conditions, which. Um, we were under the impression they were already, will, will there need to be? Will we be subject to another A R C with different changes? You know, once we actually have done them, yeah, I'm kind of nervous.
Well, it's hard to ask for something when it's only a one section of the building, but if you're saying you're taking over the whole thing, then. You know, it'd be nice if it had a little more interesting design, but I mean, we can't force that on two little pieces right now.
So, committee member, just to let you know, and, and for everybody, the applicant is, uh, not only has these two suites. Uh, they will be occupa- occupying suites one and two, and they also do run, let me just put that up for you. Uh, uh, suite thirteen. Uh, twelve, eleven, I think, other than suite eight, they are occupying the majority and the funeral.
The funeral home is, they, they'll be there, we, they wanted to stay, so we, we were keeping them there, they just signed another, another lease. They renewed the lease.
So the applicant does own, well, after, as he's noted, he will own the, the entire parcel, but he does have businesses in other suites.
The last time we approved it, wasn't the blue gonna be repainted, I thought?
Yes, that is correct.
And, but that has not been done yet.
No, it's the, the current owner until it transfers over, so he, we, he, he, we redid the roof. And, uh, the bones underneath that, the infrastructure, but as far as final painting. We, um, that's something that we will be doing under our ownership. So, um, we'll be moving ahead with that, with that blue.
Okay, so back on that landscaping that you just showed, in the one to the left, we can ask for that to be improved, because that looks terrible. Is that in the plans? That was never done before for eight?
Yeah, no, those plans were approved, um, I believe Ray, our landscape engineer Raymond.
Okay, so what, what is to the, to the left side of it that's just the dirt? Was that, do we need to call that out today, that it's gonna match in front of eight, because I don't remember what eight, what Ray came up with it? For suite eight?
So, committee member?
For the entire site.
Okay.
Uh, his plan was for the entire site.
So is that in here that we know what it is? Do you have a close up? I'm just curious, what those, the four little ones that were looking in front of the suites?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I apologize, I do not have the paint in front of me, I don't know if, uh, Robert or Brenda has the, the set of land plans that would.
So I'm trying to zoom in a little bit. For everyone to see, what you're asking about is, uh, the planter.
That one's dirt, yeah.
This one is currently dirt. So as the applicant had noted, the, um, there had, the landscape has not been improved yet, and that was, uh, still pending. But again, this plan has, was approved several years ago, and so this is why we wanted to bring it before the A R C committee. Uh, to ensure that if you had any other recommendations, uh, that you could go ahead and recommend them now, since they haven't. Uh, done the improvements.
I, I'm just curious what the plants are, that's what.
They, the, the, um, the, the legend shows that these are bougainvillas. And that the, the ground is decomposed granite.
So they're the little miniature bougainvillas that are, the little dwarf or what, cause they shed?
It looks like, it looks like there's four of them, a grouping of four in each planter.
Okay, and that goes with the overall theme out, out front, I don't remember what.
I lost you. Went out.
Okay, so it's, it's a mixture of the bougainvillas and the, the smaller little dark things are, uh, existing boulders.
Committee member, did you want me to put the, um, the actual, um. Landscape plan up for you?
If you had it, if it was convenient.
Give me one second.
Well, Brenda brings that up, I'll mention that. The applicant for the same building has another C U P that will be coming before you likely at the next meeting. So if you want, rather than get into all the, you know, gory details, and such, it's such a little small area.
Right.
We, we can work with the applicant between this meeting and the next meeting. And the next C U P include, actually involves the, the west end of the building, which is much bigger. And so we can look at the total landscape plan again, and maybe at that point, his purchase will be complete, and he'll, he'll know more of where he's at, and we can. Look at it in, in more detail.
So I'm just curious, Robert, as far as the timeframe, say when it was approved, whether it was six months ago or a year ago. What timeframe is it supposed to be completed?
Well, typically, the C U P is for two years. The challenge with a site like this, and the applicant, we're dealing with, you know, a, a number of C U Ps. So what he's been trying to do is, as he occupies more suites. And I say occupy, meaning he's actually running an operation out of there. He's done improvement, so he's, he did the paving out front, he replaced the lights to L E D. He did the trash enclosures out back, which there was a number of them. So really, the next big thing, and I, and I, like I said, I understand where he's trying to, you know, as he gets operational. Is to really do the sidewalk and the landscaping.
Okay, that's cool, we'll review it next time then, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, that, that's, I think that's a reasonable plan.
Thank you.
Are there any other, any other comments?
So just to recap, um, so we are asked, uh, did you want the, uh, applicant to do a different type of tent? In the storefront windows?
No, just let it match with, with the other ones.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I agree, tho- those, it, it's, it's dark in the front, those arches are very low. And, uh, and I just don't think there would be a lot of value in, in, in doing that, and just let it, just let it, uh, match the rest of the, of the, of the center.
So then there is no recommendations, uh, for the applicant to change anything?
I, I think that's correct.
Perfect.
So I move to approve as, as, um, brought to the committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Committee member Richard?
Approved.
Committee member Kiefer?
Yes, approved.
Committee member Rivera?
Um, yes, approved.
Let the record show that a motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for number three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, conditional use permit number one six dash zero, zero, six B. Review the proposed site plan, architecture, and landscape to amend the floor plan of an existing cannabis business. Cultivation and distribution site, which will add approximately eight hundred and seven square feet of cultivation area. And remove the dispensary area.
So good evening, um, committee members, my name is Brenda Ramirez, and I'll be presenting this item before you. Conditional use permit number sixteen dash zero, zero, six B is located at six. Eight, four, 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 Perez Road. It is currently located within suites H and I, uh, the applicant is proposing to incorporate suites G into the cannabis business. Here's a closer look, again, the existing, um, business is located on the corner, but will be expanding into G. Here's the site plan of the, um, of the business. Uh, again, they are going to be removing the, or transferring the license of the dispensary to a new location. And leaving the dispen- uh, distribution and adding cultivation to the site. So they'll be adding an additional eight hundred and seven square feet to the overall business. Here is, um, approved, previously approved. Floor plan of the business for the dispensary. And here's what the, uh, proposed floor plan will look. Once they transfer the, the dispensary over to the new site, as you notice, it, it will, um, just primarily consist of one cultivation room. Um, and a small office and distribution area in the rear. The applicant is not proposing to make any changes to the building's elevation, uh, they will, uh, remain the same. Let me see if I can go back to the picture of the existing site. So, uh, they are not going to make any change, they're not proposing to make any changes, the site itself, um, based on the previous, um. Comments from the, um, architecture review committee, uh, they have repainted the building. They have changed the, uh, landscape to a desert scape theme. Uh, they also went ahead and upgraded the trash enclosure to a, to a city standards. Uh, the last thing that is remaining on site is to repave and restripe the parking area. Um, but the app, the owner of the property has been, um, upgrading slowly, but that's, that is the last. Item that is, um, pending at the site. And with this, uh, they are going to leave the storefront, if you see the. Proposed floor plan, uh, they are stating that the storefront will remain, uh, they will be adding tint to the front of the windows, so just to match the remaining. Units, uh, in that site. And once it is repaved, the loading zone for that site, uh, will be in the striped area, uh, where my cursor is currently at. This, um, this, uh, concludes my presentation, again, this is one of the older, um, projects. We wanted to bring it before the architecture review committee, because, again, um, we just wanted to make sure that there are no additional recommendations. That the committee would like to see of the project site. And, um, I'm open to hearing any comments that you may have.
There's not much they can change, so I have no comments.
I have no comments or questions.
Um, yeah, the, same for me, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that there's any room to really change anything or any need for it. I don't have any, any comments.
So we just wanted to make sure that that is, uh, something that still we're okay with.
I move to approve it as shown here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Committee member Richard?
Approved.
Committee member Kiefer?
Approved.
Committee member Rivera?
Approved.
Let the record show, the motion passes three to zero.
Very good, thank you.
Brenda, I went ahead and switched the controls to you.
On it.
Okay, item number four, conditional use permit number two zero dash zero, one, eight. Review the proposed site plan, architecture, and landscape to establish a commercial hub center. Within an approximately nine, ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-six square foot existing commercial building.
Good evening, committee members, I'm Robert Rodriguez, and I'll be presenting this item to you tonight. Let me share my screen quickly here. All right, can, can you all see, see my presentation?
Yes.
All right, good. So again, this, uh, this is an existing site that we all affectionately refer to as the, uh, former Sam's Club Building. It's along Date Palm, at the southeast corner of Converse and Date Palm. The site's been vacant for approximately the last fifteen years, and like I said, I, I'm sure many of us who live, you know, who live in the city, work in the city, have seen. Seen this site, so currently the site is, is comprised of, uh, multiple buildings and uses. So we have the main building, which is approximately ninety-three thousand square feet and outlined in red. We have the attached retail suites, which I believe there was three or four retail suites at, at the time, which is at the northern end of the building. We have the, at the south end, a smaller retail site. And then out, out towards Date Palm, which was probably the last, uh, tenant here, up until probably a year or two ago, was a, was a lube shop. All three of these portions of the building site will, will be demolished as part of this project. In addition, there, there is a, there was a future pad site. That, that will be integrated as part in, into this project as well. So this is what the co- site currently looks like, as we look from Date Palm Drive, again, we could see the main portion of the building. In the far here, with the retail portion, the northern half of it here, and then a, a smaller retail portion to the south here. So, so the applicant, which is a, which provides a, uh, which is a commercial hub center. Providing a delivery system to end users. Will be occupying the building, and they propose to potentially redevelop the entire site. So we're gonna walk through some of those changes, here, starting with the site plan. So again, as I mentioned, the three, the three retail portions of the site will be demolished as part of this project. There is a portion of the existing building to the north that will also be demolished. Along Converse Road, we have an existing driveway approach that went to the, well, north rear of this building. That will be closed off. And along Converse Road, it will be widened along the stretch outlined with the red rectangle. This will match the existing winding that exists just to the east. So again, this, al- along this stretch will be widened. It is important to note that Engineering Department is still working with the applicant on the timing of the ultimate widening or date palm. And so, you know, they will work that out prior to planning commission. Also, some of the other off-site improvements included are streetlights along both Converse and Date Palm. And those are shown on the plan, but the final locations will be worked out with the Engineering Department. So in getting, getting into the plan and what's proposed as part of the redevelopment of the site. So again, this is a, a, a delivery business, part of that business, in addition to the onsite, uh. Drop off and pickup and vending services that they'll offer, they, they do have a van, van, vans that are part of the delivery system. So the areas you see in red are the van parking areas. These are also serves as the parking areas for the van drivers themselves. So as they arrive to pick up a vehicle, they'll park next to a, a signed van and take that van into the queuing area for loading. As we move to the southeast portion of the site, this is the customer, customer and associate parking area. So the employees who work at the facility will park in this area, along with a customer parking. Which will get, will look further, clo- closer detail with the floor plan. But the main entrance for the customers is also down in this southeast corner of the building. And so the customer areas, which is outlined here. Is, is on the southern side, and again, more associate parking along the eastern property line. So again, this is a, this is a, a delivery business, part of that business is a, is a loading area. In, in consideration of the residential nearby, the loading area is located at the front of the building along Date Palm. However, the loading area is depressed approximately three to five feet from the adjacent parking areas to the west. And we'll look at it closer in the landscape plan, but there is a eight-foot wall that comes along. This area here to help soften and screen this loading area. On the north side of the, of the project site is the van queuing area. So as the vans get ready to be loaded, they come from the van parking area, enter into the van queuing area, where there is a marshal. That loads them into the van loading area, and then ultimately exiting out, exiting out of the west side of the building. And again, we'll look at some of the features architecturally they've done to, uh, kind of soften that look and, uh, give it a. Uh, en- enhanced appearance. So again, looking at the floor plan, the majority of the building is, is dedicated to the material handling and the van loading area. However, in the southern portion, which is called out, which is called out here, is their office area for employees. Which include the amenity areas, uh, training room, break room, bathrooms. And then down here on the eastern side is their hub center. Again, the site does offer, uh, customer pickup, drop off, as well as, uh, vending services for customers. So in moving to the exterior of, of the building, so what the, uh, vision of the architectural team was to. It was to give it a modern design, using some modern features, but try to retain that retail appearance. And so they've done that by bringing a modern color scheme to the building. Using spandrel glass to again, create that retail frontage along the front elevation. The bay doors, the overhead bay doors, which there's three along the front that you can see here. These will be, you know, custom designed windowed doors to match the spandrel glass along here. They've also brought these tower elements at each corner, as you can see on each of the elevations. And again, what they've utilized is a, it's kind of a modern scheme that we've seen in many of our projects. So they're going with a light, white base color for the building, accented by a black and gray on the architectural elements. And then along the columns that you see at the bottom here, and in line with that accent color band. They'll be using a stone veneer, which is, which is shown here. And as I mentioned, hit, the, the loading area, loading dock area, which is, which is on, at the southern end of the site here. There is a eight-foot wall, which they depicted here, this, this will be a precision block tab. And it will, you know, blend in to the building, then there's also landscaping in front of that, which we'll get into shortly. So again, the landscape plan, the applicant is proposing to retain all the mature date palms along Date Palm and Converse. However, the remaining landscaping will be completely renovated to a water-efficient desert scape scheme. They'll be using a, a number of, uh, approved trees in our palette, including the African sumac, desert willows. And, and the polar verdes. Looking at the shrub palette, again, there, there, it's a, it's a very lush planted. If lush is the correct word for a desert scape ske- scheme, but it is, it is planted with many, many shrubs. And including red yucca, lantana, and Mexican sage. So what, some other improvements that we can see here in the landscape plan, there is a, at the front of the building facing Date Palm, at the northern end. There is a outdoor employee area, and it is landscape, but it does include some outdoor amenities and furniture, including some tables and benches. At the southern, southern end of the site is a, is a new trash enclosure, which has been looked at by Vertec and approved. And that will be a, a trash enclosure constructed to city standard. So in order to give a, you know, to give a vision of, to, to give an accurate, uh, vision of what this site's going to look like. The applicant prepared a rendering, this is looking at the site from Date Palm Drive. In a southeast direction, so we can see the building and the enhancements. Again, there's metal canopies along all the sides of the building, you can see the articulation with these tower, uh, tower and architectural elements. But also, which I was remiss in, in noting that, along both Converse and Date Palm. They do have a three, a up to three-foot-high berming. So that will add movement to, to the frontages of the building. And again, I was remiss in, uh, not mentioning, there is new lighting proposed throughout the site. So, that they will have new LED lighting that will ensure security and safety of, of the site, and it is all downlit and, and shielded. Well, that concludes my presentation, we do have the applicant available to answer any questions, uh, you have, I'm, I'm available to answer any questions as well.
Just tell us again on that berm that you said, that was it in the front and on Converse both?
Yep, so on Converse and, and Date Palm, they, they will be doing berming up to three feet high. Again, you know, as, as, as we've learned from Ray, you know, many, many times, just to add that, that movement, to give it some relief. And again, I think it, you know, it also is a visual enhancement just to the overall site.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I know, it would have been nice to see it here.
Yeah, I, I can, uh, if you'd like to, you know, uh, we have kind of a cross section that I could show you, if you'd like to see it. But essentially just a three-foot berm. And again, it, it won't be three foot all the way across, it, it will be up to three foot, but it will beander and change varying heights.
No, the building's beautiful.
As that vegetation matures along Date Palm and Converse. Will it get high enough to obscure the trucks that are parked there, especially in the afternoon and evening?
Well, with the, you know, again, using a drought tolerant scheme. The shrubs themselves, you know, will be moderately, you know, moderate height. But it's the berming with the shrubs that will help soften that whole, you know, will help screen all those vehicles. But yeah, we, we believe that with the, the way it's being planted, yeah, it, it will certainly, it, it will certainly help with, uh, yeah, softening that whole frontage.
That would be my only concern or comment, everything else, I think it's gorgeous, it's an amazing improvement over what's there now. So, I make a motion to approve.
Let's talk to public comments first.
Whatever.
So, uh, Robert, I have some questions for you. On the site plan, uh. Uh, and, and by the way, the building is, the, the site looks great. So my, my, my concerns are focused on the east side of the property. Is, uh, I don't, I can't see if there's a, a wall, is there a site wall that, uh, separates the, uh. The apartment, uh, parking lot from the, uh, the back.
There it is.
And back house side of the, of the building, okay. And it looks like there is some landscaping. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, let me, let me talk about that a little, so, so, you know, we, we, we did work with the applicant, they were as concerned as we were. You know, and with the residential being adjacent, and so they wanted to ensure that not only, you know, that they, that it looked good. But that it appropriately mitigated any concerns that folks may have. So currently, there is a, well, approximately, from their side, a five-foot wall. But the adjacent site here is actually about, eh, two to three foot, it varies. But it is lower, and then their, all their carport structures are here as well. And so, we do have landscaping planted all, all along, which a planter currently exists, but we'll be renovating all of that. And we've put some, what I would call appropriate trees, considering that it is a retaining wall as well. So you can see them here. But we also, you know, again, looking at how we oriented the site. We tried to bring all the activity to the front of the building, rather than have it around the back. And even with respects to the lighting, we did go back to the applicant, you know, back and forth a few times to ensure that. We have adequate light, but no spillover. So the photometric plan that we received last week, we did get zero spillover to the adjacent property and to the southeast. So again, the applicant was very considerate of the, of the adjacent, uh, properties and neighbors.
So that would actually be my biggest concern, I, I think that the, the, the carports that are on the, uh, existing apartment complex. That will help to visually block out quite a bit of, of the building anyway. But the biggest, my biggest concern is that the, uh, exterior lighting on that east side of the building. That all the lighting is shielded. And that we don't have any open glaring lighting that, uh. Um, someone looking out their window, they're gonna see at night, you know, they just, uh, expose light fixtures. So the shield, uh, light shielding is, is my, is my biggest concern.
Yeah, certainly, certainly, uh, was our concern as well, and can you see my screen still? So let me go, let me go to the last page here, again, we worked closely with our engineer on the photometric plan and. So let me show you how this kind of works, for those who maybe have never seen a photometric plan and what it does. So this, this is the first page, and it just shows you the light location. So here, you can see these are light standards, and along this side are actually fixtures attached to, to the building. So then what they did is they originally started off, and I believe we were at about thirty feet in height. We ultimately brought them down to sixteen feet in height, and then what they do is. They actually run the analysis based on the light fixture, and we do receive cut sheets, we know what they look like, they're all LED, they're downlit and shielded. So this tells us that they're sixteen feet high from, from the ground up. But what these numbers are is the amount of, the basic amount of light that will be shined as you get closer to the property line. So you can see as we get to the property line, we're approaching zero, and as we cross, it's all zero. So again, we did look at that, and we moved the lights, I don't know. That, the applicant will, will probably tell you, we've moved the lights a number of times to ensure that we got zero along those property lines.
Okay.
What's the hours of operation, I'm just curious too?
Uh, I'll let the applicant touch more on that, but on the operational narrative that we received, it, it is a twenty-four hour operation. The delivery, the delivery part is essentially from nine to ten, from nine to ten. But it is a twenty-four operation, they do have what they refer to as line haul trucks, but semi-trailers. Approximately twelve throughout the day come and deliver, deliver the packages, and then the delivery vans show up approximately at ten o'clock to start loading. But there is a twenty-four oper- operation there, but not, not involving the actual delivery vans and the, uh, ingress and egress of those vehicles.
Okay. Um, okay, I don't, I don't have any further questions or comments.
So why don't we go ahead and open up the public hearing, in case the applicant wants to add anything that I, that I may have missed?
Okay, let's, uh, let's open comments at this time, hear from the applicant.
Okay, well, good evening, uh, committee members and city staff, my name is Tarek Shire. I represent the, uh, developer, investor, owner of the property. And first and foremost, I want to thank, uh, the Architecture Review Committee members for working, uh, late. I myself was a planning commissioner for ten years, and, and I know, uh, what it's like to, to do, uh, volunteer work and, and stay up late. So thank you so much for your time and for, for listening to us. I also want to thank staff, uh, very much for the hard work they have been, uh, putting in this project. To get us to, to this level, meeting with you and listening to Robert's presentation tonight. Uh, I, I, we all recognize there was a lot of work that, that went into it. Um, by staff to get us to this level, they had been supportive, at the same time, very demanding in making sure. We present a project that is something to be proud of, uh, in that they would all be happy with. So, uh, we appreciate all their hard work. Um, I'd like to quickly introduce certain members of the team, in the event you have any questions. We do have, obviously, the two partners from Green Law Partners, Scott Mary and Damian Burke. Who will be glad to take any of your, um, inquiries, and they are glad to, uh, to, to, um. Have you take the time to hear us out tonight, as well as, um, the architect. Uh, we have, uh, Steve Grigo and the, uh, civil engineer, uh, Jacob Plays. I'm not certain if our traffic engineer is on as well, but nonetheless, we are all here willing to answer any. I'm not certain if our traffic engineer is on as well, but nonetheless, we are all here willing to answer any of your, um, inquiries. And, uh, what we're really hoping for tonight is, uh, for your support in, um, making the positive recommendation that this project moves forward. So we can, uh, take it to the next step and work with staff in getting it to the planning commission. And again, we are more than glad to answer any of your questions. I appreciate the comments that the, uh, committee members have, um, raised and glad to answer any specific one that you may have.
Thank you.
Is that cell tower existing or gonna be added? I'm just, I'm looking at my photos. I don't.
Uh, commis- commissioner, uh, committee member Kiefer, that cell tower is existing and what we're and of course, if you know anything about cell towers, you know, you can't just move them. So.
No, no, no. I, I just was curious to that.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, they will remain there and they're actually, we've designed the site around them, but in a smaller lease area.
Okay.
Uh, Robert, where are those cell towers?
Uh, you can see it, uh, right here in the rendering. It's, it's on the north side of the building. You can, and let me, let me show you on.
Yeah, I, I see it now. So it's a, it's a monopalm?
Yeah, it's a monopalm approximately right here. It's something that we've approved. God, it's been there maybe fifteen, twenty years. And, uh, but yeah, it will remain basically in this little section here. And again, we're kind of designing, building around it. It, it currently has a wall. It will have another wall built just in a smaller, uh, footprint.
Um, and, uh, who, who is responsible for maintenance of the, of the monopalm?
The, the Leacy, the Leacy is responsible for that. But with the age of the existing date palms, it actually blends in very well and with the size of the building, probably most people have not noticed it's actually there because there's so many things at that height in that area.
Um, I, 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 I agree. I, I, I don't really, I don't take any issue with that, with the monopalm. Uh, committee members, any further question? Comments?
No.
I have no further questions or comments.
Yeah, I, I, I don't really have anything more to add. This is, uh, this is exciting, uh, to see this, uh, location finally get, uh, reopened again. And this is going to be a major improvement to, um, to our city and this is, this is amazing. This is just, uh, this is great. I feel like we're the, the applicant has given us an opportunity to, to end today's, uh, committee meeting on a high note.
I appreciate that in the design process, they've taken into account the traffic, the light, the traffic coming from Converse, the residents, that it's just a real holistic planning process. And I just acknowledge anyone involved with this. It's, it's really exciting and I'm proud that this is coming to our city. I make a motion to approve.
A second.
All right, roll call.
Committee member Burchard.
Approved.
Committee member Kiefer.
Approved.
Committee member Rivera.
Approved.
That the record show that the motion passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you very much as well. I, I don't know if you can still hear me. Can you?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. I, uh, want to thank the, uh, the architectural review committee for your feedback and, uh, for recognizing the, uh, the quality work that we have put in. And again, I want to thank, uh, our creative team for coming up with a lot of these ideas, but, uh, really mostly uh, Robert and his team for guiding us and driving us to come up with, with these exciting concepts. Um, and we'll continue to work with staff. Thank you very much. We're really excited to be part of the city and, and part of the redevelopment and improvement, um, along Date Palm. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And okay, um, item F, committee member comments. So is, uh, is, is, so is Ray no longer part of the ARC? Are we going to have anyone, uh, filling that in those shoes for landscape?
Yeah. So Ray turned in his resignation effective December. So we're, we have a application period going on right now. So if you know any architect, landscape architect, architect designer, we are taking applications and we are looking for a, you know, a landscape person to fit on the committee, but the applications are, are out on our website.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's good to hear. Uh, any other, uh, committee member comments? Move on to, uh, item G, staff comments.
Other than, wel- welcome. Happy New Year, twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is our first, I think, fully Zoom meeting. So hopefully, uh, by the next one, we'll work out the kinks and, uh, you know, Brenda, Brenda will figure out what she's doing on her end. But, uh, we do have, you know, I, I know we haven't had a meeting in a while. We were kind of in the middle of all these projects at the beginning stage. So we will likely be having a number of meetings over the next few months. We have a lot of projects and a lot of exciting projects we're seeing. And I think we might have mentioned at, uh, one of the previous meetings, we're getting, you know, everything from apartments, commercial development. And so it's good. So we'll be hopefully seeing, seeing a lot of, uh, projects come your way and, you know, and get you some, get, get some great designs in front of you.
Excellent. That, that's, that's great news.
Very good. Very good.
I tried to get, I tried to get a new city engineer, but John won't leave. I, I just wanted to make sure, wanted to make sure that, that he was really there.
That was good.
I'm listening to everything you say.
That was a belly laugh.
Okay. Well, we'll keep moving forward and, and look forward to, um, someday when we can all meet in the, uh, council chambers again or meeting. Uh, okay. So on that note, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay, second?
A second.
Okay, we will adjourn this meeting at, uh, six twenty-two PM.
Thank you all. Have a, have a great evening.
Thank you, cameras.
All right, stay safe.